All right, it's 6:00 PM. Welcome, everybody, to the Wednesday, February 15, 2023, formal meeting of the Iowa City Planning and Zoning Commission. For attendance purposes, I note Commissioners present Wade Townsend Hench Craig Padron and Elliott. If Commissioner signs when he walks in, I will note that for the minutes. First item up on the agenda is public discussion of any item not on the agenda. If there's a member of the public who'd like to address the commission on an item not on the agenda, now is your opportunity. Either of you gentlemen have anything you'd want to bring up to us? I mean, you have our rapt attention. This is your chance.
[laughter]
Next item up on the agenda is discussion regarding housing affordability. Ann?
Thank you, Chair members of the commission. Ann Russell with Neighborhood and Development Services. As the Chair mentioned, this is an item related to housing affordability. At your meeting on January 18, the commission requested an agenda item be put on an upcoming agenda to talk about housing affordability in Iowa City. And there was a memo in your packet addressing this issue, and we also have a presentation prepared for you tonight. And this really was a collaborative effort. That's why Tracy Hightew, our Director of Neighborhood and Development Services, is here. Erica Kubli, the Neighborhood Services Coordinator, is here. Danielle Sitzman, Development Services Coordinator. And you all know, Sarah, we all worked on this information for you tonight. So I'm going to go ahead and get started. First, I just want to note that this is a really complex issue, talking about housing affordability, and there's no one solution. I'm going to start our presentation going over some of the efforts that pertain to your commission, the Planning and Zoning Commission, things like land use policies, zoning regulations. And then I'm going to turn it over to Tracy and Erica to discuss the variety of programs our department administers that provide direct financial assistance and incentives focused on housing affordability. And then we'll get into some next steps.
Ann, can you dim the lights?
Oh, yes. Thank you. There we go. Okay. So first, let's define what we mean by affordable housing. Typically, housing is considered affordable when a household spends no more than 30% of their gross income on housing costs. This includes utilities. When I use the term affordable housing in this presentation, I'm talking about income-restricted units, units that households need to qualify for based on their income. So you can see in the chart that this chart outlines income thresholds based on household size. So if the city has a requirement that a housing unit needs to be occupied by someone making no more than 60% of the area median income, they have to be in this income bracket here. So a household of two, making no more than $52,320,000 a year, could qualify for that since they're at 60% AMI. And anyone who makes less than that would also qualify. You can see how these numbers change, going down to 30% AMI, all the way up to 100% area median income, and what those numbers look like. In terms of our current efforts, I wanted to first go over the city's affordable housing requirements. These are requirements where private developers are required to make some type of contribution to affordable housing. There's the Affordable Housing Annexation Policy, which was adopted in 2018. And this was an action item in the former Affordable Housing Action Plan. We have an updated Affordable Housing Action Plan that was adopted in 2022 that really lays the foundation for our efforts moving forward. But in our previous action plan, one thing that was noted was to look at a potential annexation policy. And the City Council directed staff to move forward with implementation of that policy. And with annexations, the city has greater flexibility to negotiate for affordable housing during that process. There's also the Riverfront Crossings Affordable Housing Requirement, which was adopted in 2016. And during that time, a committee was formed to research best practices and present a proposal to City Council. That committee included key stakeholders from banking institutions, construction, and affordable housing organizations, and they sought to balance the interest for redevelopment and affordable housing as well as state legislation. And the Riverfront Crossings area presented a unique situation for affordable housing with its increased density that was allowed through the form-based zones. And so both of these were developed with a significant amount of public involvement, and they were created to ensure flexibility and alignment with state law. And I just wanted to get into these a little bit more to kind of lay out how they work and function. The annexation policy is applicable in situations where an annexation results in 10 or more residential dwelling units. The contribution provided by the developer must equal 10% of the proposed units, and any onsite affordable housing provided has to be affordable for a term of at least 20 years. Developers are given the option on how they would like to contribute to affordable housing, either through onsite units, transfer of lots or units to the city, or an affordable housing provider, a fee in lieu, or participation in a state or federal program like the low-income housing tax credit program. Qualifying households must be at either 60% AMI or under for rental units and 110% AMI for owner-occupied units. Then there's the Riverfront Crossings Affordable Housing Requirement. And this is limited to Riverfront Crossings, again, due to the increase in development potential that was allowed through the form-based zone. And similar to the annexation policy, it applies when a project includes 10 or more units, and the contribution provided by the developer must equal 10% of the proposed units, and any onsite units must be affordable for no less than 10 years. Again, the developer has options here, too, which include onsite housing, fee-in lieu, off-site housing, and contribution for land. And in terms of qualifying households, the standards are the same. This slide summarizes the impact that these policies have had over the last five years. The Riverfront Crossings requirement was adopted in 2016. However, the first development project under those rules wasn't built until 2018. So these requirements have not been in place for that long. The annexation policy was adopted in 2018, and there's only been one annexation that was subject to this policy since it was adopted. We have had other annexations, if you remember, on Melrose, the commercial annexation off of Slothower and IWV. But since that was commercial, the annexation policy didn't apply. The one annexation that was subject to this policy was the one off of American Legion Road east of Scott Boulevard, which is referred to as Community View. And the developer proposed to provide onsite units. And so there's 16 income-restricted units that are going to go into that development, and it's currently under construction. In terms of Riverfront Crossings, 11 projects have provided onsite housing totaling 79 units. The 79 units does include the RISE, which was required to incorporate affordable units onsite per a developer's agreement with the city. And for that project, there's 33 units that will be permanently affordable at 80% AMI. Four projects opted to pay a fee in lieu for 36 units, and the city currently has $3.8 million in the fund, $2.8 million of which was just obtained last year. And I also wanted to note that Erica's team monitors the onsite units to ensure that they are being rented to households that qualify. And if a developer-owner is out of compliance, we do collect fees, and that $3.8 million does include some fees for developers that were out of compliance. And all of these fees must be spent within the Riverfront Crossings district.
Can I ask a question? So the AMI, if you were at, say, 58%, and you are renting one of these units, is your rent then based on your 58% or that 60%? Is it then the 30% of your $58,000 that you're paying for rent and utilities? Is that how it works?
I'll have them answer that question.
For most of our programs, it's just the person who lives in it has to be below 60% to 50% median income, but the rent charge is based on a fair market rent or whatever it says in the development agreement. So in that slide that Ann had earlier, it had the fair market rents. That's basically what's modest housing. It's not based on your income that you get. So fair market rent is based at about 40% of the units in your market are below that threshold, 60% or above. So that you're paying the fair market rent. That's how most of our programs are operating, and that's our HUD requirement.
So it's not individualized? It goes by the unit?
Yep. And the only time that that is different, if you're talking about, like, different programs we offer, like Housing Choice vouchers and public housing, they pay 30% of their income on rent. But for all the other programs that we have, the rent is usually a function of fair market rent.
Could it be less or could it be more than 30% of the person's income?
Sorry, what was that?
It could be more or it could be less than 30% of the person's income.
Yes.
Thank you.
One more current effort that is a requirement. This isn't something that the Planning and Zoning Commission sees, but it's related to our tax increment financing policies. If a development project does obtain TIF from the city, they are required to incorporate affordable units into the project. So 15% of the units must be affordable at a 20-year term. The developers may be eligible to negotiate a fee in lieu or off-site units, and that's done on a case-by-case basis. And again, qualifying households, it's 60% AMI for rental and 110% AMI for owner-occupied. Next, I want to get into some of the regulatory incentives that are included in our zoning code. So in 2021, the City Council adopted an amendment to the South District Plan and then new form-based zones for that area. And last month, the council also adopted an amendment to the Southwest District Plan, which incorporated form-based land use principles. And those form-based zones and standards incorporated regulatory incentives for developers that were interested in providing affordable housing voluntarily. So the goal was that for maybe an affordable housing developer that was getting low-income housing tax credits, they could use some of these regulatory incentives to offset some of the construction costs associated with the project by providing more development potential onsite. So the incentives include things like increased density, minor adjustments to standards such as reduction in lot width or height increases. And we don't have any projects to date, but it was adopted pretty recently, so we're hopeful it will be used at some point in the future. Next, I wanted to talk about regulatory barriers and the development process. And before getting into that into too much detail, I just wanted to explain what we mean when we talk about regulatory barriers. And typically, these are local land use policies or regulations that adversely affect the development availability and/or cost of housing. So some examples of regulatory barriers are single-family-only zoning, limited amount of land that's available for multifamily development, minimum lot sizes, minimum parking requirements, even things like how we permit permanent supportive housing, which I'll talk about later in the presentation. In terms of the land use development process, we're talking about the process that a developer has to go through to obtain approval to build a project. This could include rezonings, the subdivision process, site plan review, design review. And sometimes processes are burdensome. Sometimes they can be inequitable, so we want to make sure that we're looking at process, too. In the book Neighborhood Defenders, which I mentioned in my memo, researchers at Boston University not only looked at land use regulations and regulatory barriers to housing, but also the land use process itself. And they determined that the typical land use process amplifies voices within the community that do not represent the larger community. They determined that these voices were often disproportionately white, male, older, and homeowners. And these processes could result in delays for housing projects, changes to projects which reduce the number of housing units, and also sometimes completely stalled projects. So overall, these things can result in less housing, and that's why staff is kind of looking at and evaluating barriers and process right now. This slide outlines some of the goals that we have and some of the reasons why we're looking at regulatory barriers to housing development. The first is that we want to ensure we have a predictable and consistent review process. And this is one of the reasons that we're heavily leaning on form-based zones. With the Riverfront Crossings Form-Based Code and the form-based codes that were created for the South District and the Southwest District, we put the effort up front in the process in creating the land use policy, developing the plan, laying the vision. And then we also created the code and the standards that went along with that, in the hope that the process after that would be more streamlined. We also want to look at increasing housing supply, especially multifamily housing. And I'll talk about this a little bit later, but one of the major contributors to the housing crisis is the housing supply. Going back to the need for multifamily housing, we want to make sure that our community has a variety of different housing types. We need single-family, we need duplexes, we need small-scale multifamily, we need larger-scale multifamily. And when we created the form-based zones, we incorporated a requirement that at the block level, developers would be required to have a mix of housing types to ensure that we would be getting a diversity. And then, and lastly, we wanted to address longstanding issues of inequity and discrimination. Historically, conventional zoning regulations have been used to enforce racial and class segregation. Single-family-only zones with large minimum lot sizes are used as an exclusionary practice. Currently, 81% of the city is zoned single-family. Although our single-family zones do allow some other uses besides single-family, we allow duplexes on corner lots, we allow accessory dwelling units, but we're not seeing a lot of those getting built. So these are some of the regulations that we're looking at and currently evaluating. The first is related to single-family zoning reform, and we're currently looking at ways that we could allow more units in single-family zones, different types of housing in single-family zones. Major changes to our single-family zones would require a comprehensive plan amendment. The City Council did approve $150,000 in the fiscal '23 budget for a comp plan update, so there will be more to come on that. We're also looking at accessory dwelling units, ADUs, granny flats, there's all different names for these types of units. We currently allow them in single-family zones, but again, we're not seeing a lot of them getting built. So we're analyzing our regulations to see if there's a barrier there, if our regulations are a barrier. So we're looking at the parking requirements for accessory dwelling units, the size, the design, even ownership requirements. Next, maximum bedrooms. The city currently restricts...
[laughter]
We need you jumping jacks?
No.
The city currently restricts multifamily units to a maximum of three bedrooms.
I was afraid I was having a stroke.
[laughter]
Wrong doing it?
Nothing wrong.
Go ahead, sorry.
No, that's fine. And this can be a challenge for larger families that need apartments, and also multigenerational households that need something besides a single-family home. So we're taking a look at that regulation to see if there is a revision that could be made there. Also, I mentioned that in our form-based zones, we have regulatory incentives for affordable housing, but we want to look at that citywide. So we want to see if we can apply some of those incentives to other parts of the community and look at allowing density bonuses, height increases, again, for affordable housing developers that are providing affordable housing in our community. Multifamily housing and commercial zones. Our commercial zones, most of our commercial zones, although not all of them, allow multifamily. However, it's restricted to the upper levels. The first floor has to be commercial, and they typically require a special exception that has to be reviewed and approved by the Board of Adjustment. So we're looking at if there's ways to provide flexibility to allow more multifamily in our commercial zones. In terms of permanent supportive housing, this is also referred to as Housing First. And if you're familiar with Cross Park Place, that's operated by Shelter House down on South Gate Avenue, that's an example of permanent supportive housing in our community. And it's an evidence-based model that provides housing with supportive services to the chronically homeless. Currently, in our zoning code, we classify permanent supportive housing as an institutional use instead of a residential use. So it's not allowed in any multifamily zones. So we're taking a look at how we allow permanent supportive housing to see if there's more places and more zones where it could be allowed. In terms of parking reform, this is something that we're not currently looking at amending the code at this point, but we're doing some research and best-practice research on, looking at what other local jurisdictions are doing. But typically, the approach to parking in zoning codes is to require a minimum onsite number of parking spaces. And a lot of cities are looking at parking maximums to address affordable D goals and climate goals. So that's something that is kind of on our list of things to do, but is not something we'll be bringing forward to the commission in the near future. We also want to continue to identify opportunities to apply form-based land use regulations in our greenfield areas, similar to what we did in the South District and the Southwest District. And lastly, process. Again, we're not proposing any changes to process, but we're looking at ways to increase, especially multifamily housing within the community. And one way to increase multifamily is through a city-initiated rezoning, to identify areas that would be appropriate for multifamily housing and rezoning those to multifamily. Again, similar to parking reform, this is on our list of strategies that we should be looking at. But right now, we're really focusing on some of those text amendments that I mentioned related to accessory dwelling units, permanent supportive housing, single-family zoning reform, et cetera. So back to supply, housing supply. Again, it's not the only contributor to the housing crisis, but it's one of the major contributors. And supply not keeping up with demand in our community is one of the reasons that we're looking at regulatory barriers and what we can do in terms of zoning regulations and land use policy. It's widely agreed that the U.S. has a housing shortage. This is just one report that looked at housing production. And this is a map from the 2022 Housing Under Production in the U.S. report published by an organization called Up for Growth. And the report states that the U.S. is 3.79 million units shy of its housing need. In Iowa, if you can see that in the middle, it's 8,000 units shy of its need. And we wanted to provide you a little bit more information and data specific to Iowa City. And in early 2022, planning staff completed a residential development analysis. We're currently working on updating that analysis to get the data from 2022. And what we learned from that study is that development activity is not keeping pace with demand and projected growth within our community. This graph shows residential lots created by housing type between 1990 and 2021. And you can see in 20 and 2021, these are low points. In 2021, only three subdivisions were approved. The lots that were created could accommodate 65 single-family residences, 12 duplexes, and 32 multifamily units. And this is the lowest number of lots approved since the Great Recession, looking back here in 2008, 2009, 2010. Also, single-family lots and multifamily lots are created in 2020 and 2021 or below the 10-year average that we've seen in our community. Next, we looked at building permits, and this shows building permit activity between 1990 and 2021. And in 2021 here, the city issued building permits for 133 single-family residences, six duplexes, that's the orange, the skinny-orange line there, and 195 multifamily units, that's the gray and the yellow. Single-family is at the highest since 2017, but below the long-term average of 145 units per year. Duplexes, they tend to fluctuate. But if you look at duplexes, that's again the orange, you can see, and they really drop off after 2005. And 2005 is when we amended our zoning ordinance that restricted duplex development. And after that, we got fewer duplexes. In terms of multifamily, the 2021 numbers are below the 10-year average, which is 379 units, and the long-term average of 270 units. So again, in 2021, there were 195 multifamily units permitted. So these are just some key takeaways from that 2021 analysis of building permit activity and subdivision activity. 2021 had some of the lowest levels of residential lot creation since the end of the Great Recession. Building permit activity is outpacing the creation of new lots. Lot supply is diminishing, which does not appear to be keeping up with demand. We also anticipate over 10,000 new residents by 2030. And if building activity continues at this current pace, we can only accommodate 4,900 new residents. And if residential lot creation continues at our current pace, we could only accommodate 3,000 new residents. The University of Iowa also provides dormitories for some undergraduates, but over 23,000 students rely on the surrounding housing market for their housing needs. If Iowa City cannot meet its demand for housing, it could result in slower population growth, development moving to nearby cities such as Tiffin and North Liberty, which has environmental consequences. And then increased housing prices. When supply does not meet the demand, Iowa City becomes less affordable. So staff is going to continue to encourage residential growth in areas that have access to city services, such as infill areas and areas designed for new growth, such as some of the greenfield areas that we've been looking at lately. So with that, we're going to kind of switch gears, and I'm going to turn it over to Tracy and Erica to talk about other programs.
Sure. Thank you. Also, I appreciate that you guys got a table for us, because I'm used to being up at the podium, so this is much better. All right. Thanks. I've been working in affordable housing for the last 20 years, and it is a complex program. Part of the land use is just one part of the puzzle. Affordable housing is a function, if someone can pay for housing, it's a function of the housing price, but it's also a function of their wages, the employment opportunities that they have, the education opportunities, their access to quality, affordable childcare, their access to health care, including mental health and substance abuse. So there's a lot of things that go into, if people can afford the housing that they're in. We in Neighborhood Development Services concentrate on that, the development services side, the land use, the regulation side, and then the program side in Neighborhood Services. We also have the Housing Authority, which is under Neighborhood Services. So we have a lot of programs that are meant to basically subsidize those, probably under 80% of median income, with a far majority of our services for those under 50% of median income. We have spent over $10.4 million in just calendar year '22 on affordable housing. Most of those, like I said, are beneficiaries under 50% of median income. We spent about a year looking at our policies and our programs, and with various stakeholders, we came and we finalized the Affordable Housing Action Plan that has a whole bunch of incentives. It prioritized incentives or just recommendations about how we can support and further affordable housing in our market. Those recommendations focused on what changes can we make to our existing policies and programs, what changes we can make in our development regulations, and if we had additional money, how do we spend that money for targeted populations broken down by 0% to 30%, 30% to 60%, and 60% to 100%. We're also in line with the action plan. Our action plan is also in line with the City Council's strategic plan, because the strategic plan focuses back on this report that you see that you can find online. And it basically says, advance our prioritized recommendations and work with partners to undertake significant affordable housing efforts. So Development Services and Neighborhood Services will be working in conjunction to try to strengthen affordable housing in our community and work on that supply, because a healthy market has a housing at every, I call it the housing continuum, and we're going to get to that at the end of the slide. So it provides housing for people at all stages of income, and it provides housing for all stages of life, you know, empty nesters, retirees, young families, students. So we will be talking about that. I always call it, we have a toolbox of financial programs that we tap into, and there are a lot. Affordable housing, when you do it right, it can be complex. There's a lot of funny partners, there's a lot of different sources, they all require different things. So you can see up on the screen, basically, we'll work with anybody if they give us money to support affordable housing in our communities. So one of our main partners is the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. We are an entitlement community, and that simply means we're a community of over 50,000. And because we don't have to compete for our annual community development block grant and home funds, it goes through a formula that Congress has, and then it basically tells us each year how much money we have. year how much money we have. Community development block grant funds, or I'll call them CDBG, they're flexible. They can be used for housing, jobs, and services in our community. They just have to benefit primarily low to moderate income residents, which is that 80% or less category. Home funds can only be used for housing. So we get our home funds, and we use it for rental housing, owner-occupied housing, can be used for tenant subsidies. So those are the funds that we get every year that we work, and we spread that out into the neighborhood, and we try to maximize how much affordable housing we can have in our in our neighborhoods. We also, through the Housing and Urban Development, we operate the Housing Choice Factor and Public Housing, which is the next slide, so I'll wait to talk about that. And then we have a one-time appropriation of 18.3 million of ARPA funds. Those are those American Rescue Plan Act funds that each unit of, well, basically, cities across America received. We received 18.3, and we're going to sliver out a portion of that to benefit just affordable housing. And so council will probably see those recommendations for those fundings about how we allocate those money, what projects we we fund later this spring and the summer. We also work with state funds. The Low Income Housing Tax Credit Project, which is a 4% 9% tax credit deals, that comes through the Iowa Finance Authority. They're actually IRS funds, but they're funneled through the state, and then we apply, our developers apply for those on an annual basis for the 9% tax credits. They provide new construction. They're heavily subsidized, and that's how we get new construction typically in our market. We don't get them every year. We might get a project once every other year or once every three years. And then we got a special allocation of community development block grant funds that were pandemic-related. We've allocated those out. We've already spent those. That was a one-time allocation. And then we have our local funds. In the last four or five years, the City Council has, in addition to our federal funds, they've allocated anywhere between 650,000 to $1 million on affordable housing. And they had a they distribute in a formula. So out of that, it's been a million dollars for the last couple of years. We allocate 70% to the Housing Trust Fund of Johnson County. So people can, our developers can apply directly to the Housing Trust Fund throughout the year. I think they have a funding allocation every quarter. So that money gets out to them. We reserve 20% of that allocation that we give them to light the low-income housing tax credit projects. So the developers also fund are asking for funds for those projects through them. 10% goes to security deposit and landlord landlord risk mitigation program. We have a partnership and an agreement with Community Crisis Services and Food Bank to provide security deposits to those most in need. They have to be below 50% of median income. We provide money in an opportunity fund. So if we get applications that fit outside any other of our income streams, you know, it's not the right window, it's not eligible activity under a federal or state program, they can apply. And we've used those funds for various things. We have a Healthy Homes Program where we provide rehab, or if you are a household with a your low, you meet the income threshold, and you have a person in your household with COPD or asthma or lung disorder, we can go in there and provide up to 7,500 in rehab. Could be air conditioners, could be taking moisture out of the house, fixing like leaky pipes, putting flooring in, taking out carpet, hard surface flooring, and then emergent needs. Emergent needs could be anything that we've used money for weatherization of Enforce View Mobile Home Park. We've used money for houses into into homes for various things. These are just small. We cap it at 50,000. They're small amounts of money, but they represent there's some vital need that needs to be addressed. They can't wait to a regular funding deadline. We also have general fund dollars, and we've used general fund dollars in partnerships with a lot of projects, even with our federal projects. A good example is the South District Home Ownership Program where we bought duplexes in the South District neighborhood. We rehab those. We've used general fund dollars, and we partner those with the federal home down payment assistance dollars. And then general obligation bonds, sorry, general obligation bonds. So there have been times in the past where we've had a large project, they need a lot of financing, and we could provide a loan to that developer, probably cheaper than what the private market can can do. And they're usually 20-year loans. We also have the Housing Authority. And the Housing Authority, we're the second-largest housing authority in the state of Iowa. We serve Johnson County, Iowa County, and parts of Washington County. We stabilize housing for about 1,500 households. So we do operate 102 public housing and affordable housing units. This is the program where the tenant only pays 30% of their income approximately for housing, as long as it's modest housing. The rent charge has to be below a threshold or what the family can pay, and then 30% of their income goes to rent, and we pay the rest to the landlord directly. We make about 8.3 million of those payments to landlords every year under that program. And I always like to, there's always some misconceptions about who who utilizes our programs. 58% of our public housing and our Housing Choice voucher tenants are elderly or disabled. And of those that are families with children, they're working. They just don't make enough in our private market to pay for housing. Less than 1% report family investment program, or what some people call welfare, as their sole source of income. And it's also interesting to note, in the last five years, we've also been given the opportunity to apply or be awarded specialty vouchers. The Housing Choice Voucher Program is not an entitlement program. Just because you have more low-income people living in your jurisdiction, you don't get more vouchers. You have to apply for them. They're not always readily available. HUD doesn't always have offer them up, you know. So we have applied for those specialty vouchers, and it's in cooperation with the Veterans Administration for VASH vouchers for homeless veterans, and also with our coordinated entry process. So coordinated entry is facilitated by Shelterhouse. It's with our partners in the in the affordable housing, in our in our public service world. They meet, they prioritize clients, and then they send those clients to the right housing intervention. So for all those specialty vouchers, they went through the coordinated entry system, or they went through the VA. They come to us, and then we provide the housing voucher for that family. I think that's about it. And then Erica is going to take you, you can go to the next one, through our subsidy and how we what's considered a shallow and deep subsidy.
All right. So something we need to consider with affordable housing efforts is what income level a particular project might serve, and how much subsidy or public assistance is required to make that project feasible. So if we want to provide housing to those at very low income levels, a greater subsidy is needed. On this slide, I have three broad categories of subsidies. So market rate housing is where there's no income restriction, no assistance provided. Most of our housing stock falls into this category, and the type of housing is developed based on market conditions. Shallow subsidy housing can be described for households who are between 50 and 80% of the area median income, which is considered low income. So in order to be affordable, rents would need to be below market rent, and therefore, some subsidy is required to bridge that gap. Examples of this might be an affordable rental project for a family under 60% of the area median income, like Housing Fellowship would provide. A lot of our homeownership programs, such as our Down Payment Assistance Program, our owner-occupied housing rehab program, would also fall into this category. Housing for very low-income households or those under 50% of the area median income is often called deep subsidy. For these types of projects, there's a larger gap between the market rate rent and what occupants can afford, so they require a more substantial subsidy. Often, this is achieved through subsidy layering, where the developer has to secure funds from multiple funding sources, which can get very complex. And then this can also be done through an ongoing subsidy, such as the Housing Choice Voucher Program that we've discussed, where where the subsidy provides rental assistance each month on an ongoing basis, based on 30% of that person's income. An example of a deep subsidy project would be Cross Park Place or the 501 Project, which are the permanent supportive housing efforts by Shelterhouse that have been mentioned earlier. Low-income housing tax credit projects would also be considered deep subsidy. When we assist these shallow or deep subsidy projects, we're often working with nonprofit affordable housing providers, and that's our ideal situation. Tracy would call it our gold standard. The type and amount of funding provided will dictate the length of the affordability for our project. However, when we're working with a nonprofit affordable housing provider, whose mission is to provide affordable housing, we know that even when that period ends, they're going to continue providing affordable housing. Conversely, when we work with a market rate developer, and we require affordable units for a period of 10 years, we know those units are probably going to convert back to market rate after 10 years. We also more commonly run into compliance issues when we work with people who are not experienced with affordable housing and the income documentation, which requires just more staff time to make sure that they're meeting the intent of the program. So we know that different projects require varying levels of subsidies, and we also know that we don't have an infinite budget to allocate out to projects. So another consideration is what types of projects are the most cost-effective to fund. This table shows a five-year review of city-assisted rental projects, how many units were generated, and the average amount of public funds invested in each unit. For rental rehab, which is just making repairs to preserve an existing unit of rental housing, that's the lowest cost, with about 13,000 invested per unit on average. We assisted or created 85 units during this five-year period. Acquisition for rental housing for special populations is next, at an average of about 18,000 per unit. This is housing acquired by typically nonprofits for people with physical or mental disabilities. The term SRO that we have up there means single-room occupancy. It's where tenants have their own bedroom, but they share like the kitchen and the living room and the bathroom, that type of thing. Next is rental new construction, at about 77,000 per unit. You can see that that cost jumps up quite a bit. And then the highest cost was for general rental acquisition, general affordable housing rental acquisition at about 157,000 per unit. This data can vary from year to year, depending on what projects are funded, but we see similar themes throughout the years. So we use this data to encourage project types that have lower average public investment per unit, to stretch our dollars further. So when we hold funding rounds for like CDBG and home allocations, projects that have lower costs per unit, or those that leverage non-city resources, will receive additional points towards our score. And then those projects are reviewed by the Housing and Community Development Commission and recommended to council.
Then I was just going to take you through that housing continuum, giving you an example of the type of housing projects we we fund. So under the housing continuum, you start at like emergency shelter. And so we have funded, and these are the deep subsidies. Our providers are either not going to get rental income, or they're going to get very reduced rental income. So to make things affordable, you have to reduce the debt. So these projects are usually typically, we try to aim for debt-free so that they can provide, they can provide that maintenance, and they can provide continual operations. So you would have the emergency shelter, you'd have the Domestic Violence Intervention Program Shelter. Those are shelters. Then you step up, and you go to transitional housing or permanent supportive housing. So Cross Park Place, 501 Project would be examples of that permanent supportive housing. And then the bottom left is housing that we have provided. It was a Lytech project, but it was for senior housing. And then the next slide. The next slide, as you move on, the housing continuum is just just affordable rental. And so the upper left is the Peninsula Project, those 10 units that we own for affordable housing. The other projects are various projects by the Housing Fellowship, whether we provide rental single-family homes, we do duplexes, we do townhomes. Those are rented for people below 60% of median income. And I'm just giving you examples, just so you can see the type of housing that we support. And then the next one is housing that you see in the Riverfront Crossings, where we have that 10% requirement. The RISE is a student-dominated housing development. We have 33 permanent units in there. They can go up to 80% median income. The next one below that is the Saban. The Housing Fellowship brought three units, that's permanent, what we consider permanent affordable housing, rented to people at 60% of median income. And then Delray is a Lytech project by the Housing Fellowship. And so Lytech projects are usually affordable for 30 years, but since the Housing Fellowship will be the general partner, technically, as they own it, it'll probably be affordable, what we would consider permanent affordability. So those are three projects, an example of three projects that we have in the Riverfront Crossing District. Some single, the Delray will provide housing for people with disabilities, too. So between affordable rental, student-dominated housing, and then just affordability. And then the next.
I have a quick question. So you're saying that all these projects are affordable, are providing affordable apartments, right?
The 33 units in the RISE are affordable, not the not the rest of it.
Okay.
And then Saban, I think there's 28 units out there. Three of them are affordable. And then Delray is a Lytech project, so they're all below 60% of median income.
So so what's the price of one, like a typical price of one apartment there?
I don't know what the, we didn't sell it. It was like a development project.
No, no, I know, like the rent or whatever, like.
Do you have the fair market rents?
The RISE would be, they're the efficiencies, I can't.
So it would be that a person making 60% of the median income can pay no more than 30%?
No, the only time that it is confusing. So the eligibility is just limited by how much you make. So that's like the 60, 80, 30, 50% median income. The rent's based on that fair market rent, which just means it's a modest rent in our market. So that means they have to pay the full price. So unless they have a voucher, you have to pay the full rent. So the fair market rent for an efficiency is 757. So those folks have to pay 757 for rent. The landlord can always charge cheaper rent, but they can't charge more than that.
Okay. And then, so is there a difference that the city, who pays the difference?
Nobody.
Okay.
So basically, like in the RISE, any differences in income, they're being made up by the other, like the non-subsidized or the non, I can't remember how many units are in the RISE, but if 10% is 33, so if you do the algebra, the other way around. So if you have 100-some units, I'm just going to say 100, simple. So that subsidy is basically, they're paying more, and then we're we're basically holding the rent to the fair market rent for those 33 units, if that makes sense.
So what are those others paying for?
I don't know. They don't have to.
Disclose that.
They don't have to disclose that to us.
But Tracy, even though it's called fair market rent, it's a below-market rent rate, right?
Yeah.
Right. The 757 is is below what the others are paying. I just wondered.
40% are below, 60% of the market is above. So it's just basically, that doesn't mean a landlord has to. There's a lot of affordable housing providers that will will offer lower rent than what the fair market rent is. But what you're seeing in Riverfront Crossing for private development, a private developer will go to the maximum typically that they can.
What kind of 700 and some dollars for an efficiency, is that affordable?
Personally, it's not for, I would not spend that amount of money for that. But it's affordable in the sense that I think market rate for some of those are 1,200. So if you're looking at paying seven for the same unit, and other people are paying over 1,000. So would I argue that it's affordable to someone at 30 or 50%? No. Is it affordable to somebody at 60 or 80?
That's. Go on. So what kind of waiting lists do we have for people who have requested being in a unit like this, and we don't have a place to give them?
We don't know. These are private market developments. So like the RISE, Saban, if you're talking about the Riverfront Crossings District, and we're dealing with.
Well, I'm talking about all of it, but but that's interesting to me.
We only keep waiting.
So they don't come, they don't come through you. They go through the private developer.
They go directly to the developer. Yeah. The only waiting list that we keep is for public housing and for our Housing Choice Voucher Programs.
Okay. And you're taking applications a year from now for those units?
We are assisting for Housing Choice Vouchers people that applied back in 2019. So all of the housing that we provide.
They each have their own way people would apply for.
People apply to the Housing Fellowship, Mayor's Youth, United Action for Youth, any of the private development. They're paying, and they might be maintaining a waiting list, but we don't. Not for properties that we don't own.
And they're affordable pursuant to a zoning code requirement. We require the developer to annually verify that they're complying with that. And then Erica investigates the information that they provide to us, and if it's not accurate, or there's holes in it, will require additional information. And if we determine that they did not comply with their obligation, then we get the fee for that year, and then extend their year of compliance, or extend the compliance term by an additional year.
But if half their units are rented to their low-income partners, children attending the university who are making $15,000 a year as a student, we don't know that, and that's legal.
Or affordable housing for students, they do have to qualify, dependent if it's TIF financing or under the Riverfront Crossing, they have to verify that they're independent. So they'd have to show their parents' tax form that they they're not claimed as a dependent on their parents' tax form. Under TIF projects, you can be a full-time student, but you have to be a veteran, married, have a child, or you have to have a, your family has to be low to moderate, your whole family has to qualify, including your parents. So with students, we do have some special provisions. And so private developers are not used to certifying folks. They're not used to getting parental tax forms. So it's a struggle.
That's why I just, I guess I just assumed that somehow the pipeline started here and went to them, but it doesn't, which just feels wrong to me, but.
And then when when nonprofits or whoever. And then when nonprofits or whoever, when they're applying to us for federal funding or CDB, a regular allocation process, that's point when they, they're making that argument and they're putting that narrative that they have. Like I know Town, the Lytec developer for Towncrest, the, I can't remember what it's called, but it's a elderly complex, they'll tell us, like they have 200 people on their waiting list. Private developers probably would not take the time and effort to establish a waiting list. If you qualify and you're there, you probably get it.
If I understood, my takeaway from part of your presentation was, we're better off getting the fee in lieu because then we control the money and they end up in a unit that's probably subsidized in perpetuity.
I can just say my opinion, it might not reflect, I don't know, you'd have to talk to city council, but in my experience, when we get the fee in lieu, like for example, Tailwinds had to pay 1.8 million in their fee in lieu. It was a tax increment financing project. We got the 1.8 million, turned around and bought eight duplexes in the South District for our homeownership program for 1.5 million. So that program, we can sell homes after we buy the duplexes, we condo them, we complete, do complete rehabilitation. We sell that, those units for 155,000 with down payment assistance. So those folks are only having to finance less than 100,000 and that's affordable. And then, well, it has to be below 80%. So we know that, we know when we have, and we do a project and we partner with a nonprofit housing developer, that that project's going to be affordable for the long term, not just for a 10-year requirement. So my preference would probably be yes. I like the fee in lieu because of what we can do. In Riverfront Crossings, you have to use that fee in lieu. When we go to do that project, it has to be used in the Riverfront Crossings District. So whatever we do, we'll hope to find a, we might partner with the county on property that they own. We might decide to develop, but if we develop, we're going to, we're going to take a nonprofit affordable housing provider with us, most likely.
Any other questions? We just have a couple more slides and then, okay.
Yeah, I'll wait.
Oh, we got, here, Tracy, you got one more.
All right. The next one is affordable owner-occupied housing in that continuum before we hit just private market affordable, or private market housing. We support affordable owner-occupied housing through down payment assistance, new construction. We, we have an extensive owner-occupied housing rehab program. So if you're under 80%, we can provide up to 25,000 in rehab. If you're in a targeted area in Iowa City, it's a 50% grant. But we look at, so if we come in and do owner-occupied rehab and you can't pay back, let's say you have to pay back all of it. If 30% of your income is only $50, we'll just, sorry, if 30% of your income, you still have 50% to make up to that 30%, we're just going to get 50%, or sorry, $50 in payment. If the person's already paying 30% of their income on housing payments, we're just going to put a deferred payment loan so they don't have to pay us back until they sell the property, rent the property, or no longer in the property. So we make it affordable. We do about 25 homes a year in owner-occupied housing rehab. The picture on the upper left was from the single-family homeownership program, money that we received from the state after the floods of 2008 to increase our, basically to replenish the houses that we had to buy out and demolish that were in the floodplain. Most first-time home buyers were buying these. So this is a townhome. On the bottom right is a university home where we purchased the home, rehabbed it, and we sold it for affordable owner-occupied housing. Habitat Home is up on the upper right. And then on the bottom left is the first home, the first duplex that we converted in the South District program. And we sold those two units as affordable owner-occupied housing. And I think their total housing payment each month was about $500. So that was our first project. We put solar panels in. We really concentrate on energy efficiency so that their bills would be low. So that's just the hodgepodge. And then like I said, the next rate is all your private market. So like I said, a housing market takes, you know, would have a variety of housing, different types of housing for, to meet your stages of life and your income levels. And so that is what we're trying to do through our multiple partners, through Development Services, Neighborhood Services, and our land use policies. So, and I think that's it for us.
Yeah, just a, just a quick summary. Are we, are we at our capacity? Let's see, what did I want to say here? This was just a summary of basically everything that we just talked about. But I think what I wanted to say more than anything on this slide is that as planners, we're really focusing on what our area of expertise is, the land use policy, the zoning regulations. But we cannot regulate our way out of this, the housing crisis. And so if we're really looking to serve the city's most vulnerable families, it's really the programs and incentives that Tracy and Erica talked about, housing choice vouchers and that direct financial assistance. So in terms of next steps, we are working on multiple text amendments to the zoning code, which we hope to have before you in the summer of 2023. And we are going to be embarking on a comprehensive plan amendment in the relatively near future. So there should be some more information on that in May or June of this year. So I'll turn it back to you, Chair.
All right. Thank you very much. First off, thank you, everybody. This is an outstanding comprehensive overview of the housing, affordable housing issue in Iowa City. I hope this gets a, spread farther than just this commission because I think this would be very helpful for people that are concerned about affordable housing but are not looking at it in a holistic fashion and just lasering down on specific items. So thank you very much for that. This, obviously a ton of work went into this, so I really appreciate that. A couple thoughts came to mind as I was watching this. It seems pretty obvious to me, the issue is we just need more housing and more mix types of mix, mix of types of housing. With 81% of the housing and, I mean, the zoning in Iowa City for single-family residential, that's a problem. And we're, there's no way out of this if that mix stays the way it is. In this book, Neighborhood Defenders, this one line in here, I think absolutely reflects the issue. It's what we've run across, I've been doing this for eight years now. The, projects are not necessarily stopped by zoning codes alone. They are often delayed, stopped, or altered by interested residents using local land-used institutions. You know, we're an institution. We hear all the time where people come here and don't want development because their sightlines will be interfered with. They don't own that property, but they're trying to control what happens because of the way it's going to look out their back door. The one thing I really appreciate Commissioner Science for, because he'll say right to them, if you cared about what it looks like, you should have purchased the property. But that is a big problem because for those of us who've been around here for a while, the Grand Living concept on west part of Iowa City by 218, that's now was built in Corvail, the Grand Living at Bridgewater. I don't know what happened behind the scenes, but we have the presentation here and the neighbors were adamantly opposed to it for sightline issues. So that very powerful, good senior housing development went to Corvail, not Iowa City. And I just think we have to reflect on that line that was included in this report. And then the issue of process, I think the barriers issue is very real. I'm a big advocate for, you know, everything people wants is going to take staff time. And if you're going to take staff time, you have to hire people. You can't keep adding on to staff for more and more things to do. It's not fair to staff and it's not realistic. Unfortunately, because of legislative action, action in Des Moines, property taxes that can be collected are diminishing rapidly because multifamily residential went from commercial to single. So the amount of property taxes being collected by Iowa City is decreasing rapidly. In addition to other things.
Should have made rents go down, but didn't.
But did not. And that was the reason the landlords wanted it, because they said, our rents will go down. And of course, it did not. As a matter of fact, they went up. And there are other actions occurring in Des Moines which will cause even further erosion of property taxes. So everything mentioned here takes staff time. All the contributions, it's not federal money or state money. If it's local money, it has to come through property taxes. So we're seeing the diminishment of all of that. So I think we have to find things we can do in the process to try to reduce the barriers to encourage development. Because I absolutely agree, it's multifaceted problem. We just saw it. Very well illustrated. Undeniable that supply is part of the issue. We have 30,000 students in Iowa City, which increased demand. We all remember basic econ 101. You increase demand and supply doesn't change, the price is going to go up. And now we saw on this chart here that the demand is going to be increasing, but the supply is not going to proportionally increase, which means higher prices. I for one do not want Iowa City to look like Corvail or North Liberty. Anybody that's interested in zoning and building and looks at some of those developments out there, I don't want to see what they're going to look like in 20 years because it's not going to be good. You know, we want quality, so we don't want to surrender quality, but we have to find a way to work with developers to get more housing quantity. And one thing about processes that, and then I'll shut up, about something that didn't make sense to me. Recently, when we were talking about the rezoning at Riverfront Crossings in the Orchard Sub District, there is no height bonus allowable for affordable housing units. But we were complaining there weren't affordable units. See, we're creating obstacles because we passed those regulations, but then we complain that something's not being done about the obstacles. So it's very difficult, and I'm not criticizing anybody because I absolutely voted on that and I didn't see it at the time, but a lot of the regulations we've put in place do not let some answers be found. So just my, my thoughts there. What I would ask, since this is so complicated, and I think we could be here all night if we tried to came up with one issue here, one issue there, things we'd like to see changed, I think the answer is, and I don't speak for anybody here but myself, is maybe, because we asked staff to present their presentation, they did, that maybe the answer is to ask the city council to reform a committee because they had the, in 2018, the Affordable Housing Annexation Policy Committee was formed. And in 2016, the Riverfront Crossings Affordable Housing Requirement was instituted. Those aren't very old, they're five years and eight years, but maybe it's a time to do it. Check in to see if there's something that could be done with a new committee to make recommendations holistically, comprehensively, to take out some of those barriers, such as I mentioned there for the RFCO. And I just think that's a way to get us to an answer, to recommend a committee be reformed or that group reconstituted, rather than for us to sit here and poke at individual things because we could literally be here all night because there's hundreds of things that could be done. One last thing, and then I promise to shut up. Sarah, are there any state Iowa code issues that really restrict our options for affordable housing? And also, could you address the issue? Because this is very real for the people who like to follow politics. Johnson County is frequently on the crosshairs of the legislators in Des Moines. And if Iowa City, Johnson County does things that they don't approve of, then there's retaliatory legislation that's introduced. And so if you could briefly mention that too, talk about.
Even back in 2016 when we were, when there was the ad hoc committee created to formulate recommendations on the affordable housing requirements, there was a rental permit cap in effect at that time. So the city has been preempted from capping rent rates. Since 2017, the legislature has preempted local control over, they've amended the state zoning code five times to take away local control over various issues. So it's important to keep in mind the balance that we're trying to strike here. And Anne touched on it, Riverfront Crossings is unique because developers have an incentive to develop there, you know, a greater incentive to develop there. So they're willing to, generally willing to contribute to the affordable housing, you know, participate in that program that has been codified in our local ordinances, which is what makes it difficult to impose citywide. There's not the same kind of incentives under, you know, our typical single-family zoning regulations. So all of these things are important to keep in mind, you know, when you consider how to manage this complex process. At the time, there were, you know, various industries all at the table coming together to figure out what's realistic in this market, so.
Well, and it's not a unique Iowa City problem. I mean, I, I think, you know, I've been in this town for 45 years, more than that. And it's always been here. But I feel like we really care about it, we spend a lot of time talking about it, and we've done some great things here. But across Iowa, I mean, you look at small-town Iowa, there's no place to live there either. I mean, I was surprised that Iowa is only 8,000 units short. I mean, I feel if 1,000 of those go to Iowa City, I believe there's way more need in Iowa than 8,000 units. Because you hear all the time about the small towns annexing land and giving the land away if people will come and build houses there, just because they're trying to build their tax base. I mean, the, the problem is, is not just in Iowa City. And, you know, and it's national as well. Okay, that said, I did have one question about regulatory things, and it was about, there was nothing mentioned anywhere about building codes. And, you know, I, I believe in strong building codes, but I've read some articles lately, a couple places, about the big advances that have been made in prefab and the way housing is built. And I don't know if that, those kinds of things are allowed in our building codes currently and if there's something we could do if they aren't to make sure that that happens. Just to put that on the table.
I can answer that for you. So manufactured housing is regulated by the federal government. So actually, we're preempted from saying what can and can't.
By the federal government instead of the state government.
So the federal government says we must allow it, and we do. And it is allowed to be built here and there are no more design regulations on a manufactured home than any other single-family home. So it's not the building code per se that's already an allowed type of, of construction and we've seen it happen and successfully in our city. So it's not really a building code barrier.
Good to know. Thank you.
I have a question going back to this, the pot of money, the 3.8 million. So what happens to this money? Who decides? Is that, is that a group of people or?
What will happen is that, to be honest, we didn't get to 2.8 million until, what, December? Yeah, we didn't get it till recently. So we had to wait till we had a sufficient amount of money that we could invest in Riverfront Crossings. We have been in conversations with the county about developing a piece of land that they own, like a joint partnership. We build that and then provide so many affordable housing. But we'll have to wait and we'll have to talk more with the county. If that doesn't pan out, then we'll be looking for other development opportunities, whether we acquire or we build. But that'll all have to go through the city council. So staff can suggest a policy or suggest a project, but city council ultimately has to approve it.
But is part of the problem with, problem, the situation with Riverfront Crossings is that it's such a desirable place for people connected to the university, including students, to live, that that drives the per square foot of rent or purchase up because people, the demand is higher. And so if the demand's higher, you can get more money.
That packs a really high price, yes.
I mean, the same amount of money, if you built it out on Scott Boulevard, you would get a lot more square footage for.
Yeah, that's one of those things by state code. If we have fees from the Riverfront Crossings District, we can't use them outside the Riverfront Crossing District.
Sure.
Now, tax increment financing, we can use those citywide. So we're having a, Foster Road was a tax increment financing residential deal. So as that development spurt grows, we get the taxes and so much has to be used for affordable housing. We can use that citywide, so. But not the fee for Riverfront Crossing because that's bound by state code.
And I think there should be affordable housing in Riverfront Crossings.
It's just going to cross more.
It's just going to be smaller. You know, it's going to be those small units for students. And hopefully some old.
I live in a very small unit.
Some old people. Hopefully some old people.
And I'm a very old woman.
People who live by themselves.
I, I remember Commissioner from the Housing Commission, I don't remember his name, but he said, and I don't know if this is true, he said that developers were hesitant to keep building affordable housing. And one of the reasons is because we have a lot of empty affordable housing units.
Where?
In Iowa City. Because they, they don't have enough rooms or enough bathrooms, so people don't, you know. So people don't, you know, don't like to, cannot live in them. They're just not convenient. So I was wondering if the city counts them, if you have a way to count if we have affordable units that are empty, that are not being used.
I don't know of a major problem with not, of not filling our subsidized housing. I know the Saban houses, they took time to fill up just because it was downtown and the rents were affordable, but you had to pay for parking. And a lot of people with lower incomes still have a car. And so to pay for parking in addition to your rent, they had a hard time finding those when the Housing Fellowship had so many other units where you, parking was free. I can't, do we?
I think, I mean, it's possible that this person was referring to, I think that there's been conversations that I've heard about some of the Clark properties downtown, like the one on College Street, that, or, you know, some of them elsewhere that have, where units have been deliberately, not deliberately. Hello, let the sun shine. Go ahead, Anne, you probably know more about it than I do.
Those aren't units that would be part of the affordable housing.
Right, that's what I mean, that they really are not affordable housing units. But someone may say, well, I've heard there's a lot of empty apartments downtown. Well, if the landlord is choosing not to rent them, there's nothing you can do about that.
Yeah, the Casey Cook, sorry.
I don't know if what he told me is true. It's the landlord, but I cannot remember his name. He's the landlord and he's in the Housing Commission.
I don't know of a problem with subsidized housing, trying to find tenants. The Casey Cook Apartment Survey, they did report a lot more vacancy in like three-bedroom units in the Penecrest Mile. And that might be some of the new construction coming online. Or we did hear that to, they weren't renting some of the three-bedroom units. So in order to rent them, they were providing, two people could go in there, they were getting, and they were paying just the two-bedroom price. So it was lowering the rent down in the study. But that wasn't a subsidized or, that wasn't the housing that we support. That was private market. So they don't have to disclose everything they do to us.
I have a question. On all of these, there's several loans and grants and stuff that lower income can apply for. Is there any one place where they can get all this information? And do they have to fill out applications for each of these loans or grants or subsidies that are available?
Based on the program, so the programs that we offer, yeah, they can come in and they have to apply. But we work with the Housing Fellowship, United Action for Youth. We work with about 20 or affordable housing providers. So they would have to apply to them if they wanted to get in there.
And how is that information available to people that come in?
Yeah, we have it all on our website. People can call in. We have a down payment assistance program right now that we're partnering with Green State that's on our website. So we try to get that information out to folks, and we do different marketing. And we try to keep our website up to date. But if you're looking for affordable housing, there's not one central source to go to that basically tells you. If you're really low income and you're going through that coordinated entry process through Shelter House, that's great because it looks at your client, your needs, and then assigns you to a housing intervention, and we get that referral. So coordinated entry is the best way if you're very low income. If you're someone at 50, 60% of median income, you're relying on calling us, checking out our website, or just interested in the program that, that we're offering.
So why are there so many different agencies that take care of these things? They're all doing, it sounds to me, the same thing, but you have to know where they are in order to apply.
We try not to do a duplication of services, but we have different providers that provide different things. Like the Housing Fellowship is the general affordable rental provider in our market. And I think they have close to 200 units. But there's certain, like United Action for Youth, they focus their housing as on a homeless, homeless teens or teen moms. Other providers just focus on people with disabilities. So basically, people are providing housing based on certain clientele or different populations. So they're not always eligible for everything out there. And so, and, I mean, it's great that we have multiple providers, but if you need affordable housing, it can be confusing. We'd get a lot of phone calls. Our housing authority, our department gets a lot of phone calls saying, I need affordable housing, where can I go? And we try to direct them to resources.
And a lot of these requests are coming from people that aren't, that are immigrants that are, where English is not their first language. And so they come in and they ask for information, and you're not understanding their request. And so how do they, how do they get treated, well, fairly? If they have to go to 99 different places for the information?
I mean, if they call us, we do have language line. But we just paid for, with our ARPA funds, a housing stability pilot project with Shelter House, and they're hiring a housing navigator to help navigate the housing situation for people in need. Is it great? No. Currently, we don't have the capacity to walk people through all the different housing and to help them apply and then take them to show units. But that's what that housing navigator through Shelter House does. But once again, that'll be for very, people with very low incomes.
So I guess my other concern is you're hiring more people to do the job, which is taking money out of the pot, which could be used for affordable housing. So why aren't these, why aren't the agencies getting together to, so the information can be held in one spot, even though they may have to go to different places to, to actually get the services?
I think that's what coordinated entry is trying to do. But like I said, you have to be very low income to go through that coordinated entry. So DVIP, Shelter House, UAY, Center for Worker Justice, and a few other, remember the other ones? They're all part of that coordinated entry where they're bringing their clients together and they're staffing them, and they're helping that person figure out what level of housing or what intervention that they need to go to or, or what program would serve them best. That's the best thing we have right now of directing, navigating through that maze of housing.
These are just concerns that I'm hearing from, from different, different areas.
Further discussion, Chad?
I got a quick question. So why, why was the decision made to move away from duplexes that weren't on corner lots?
That's a good question. You know, I think a lot of it was due to design concerns with multiple duplexes being all within a block, multiple duplexes in a block and having that same housing type over and over again and kind of that repetition. And with that 2005 amendment, we restricted it only to corner lots. So it decreased the, the land that would be available to house a duplex. But I think it addressed the concern that we're getting duplexes where we don't like the design.
So similar to how we approach like, like larger buildings where we have design setbacks and such, unit to unit or every so many feet. I mean, is there opportunity to revisit the duplex being limited to corner lots and then maybe try to address that through designing requirements?
Yeah, absolutely. And that's something that we're looking at right now. What we're doing is kind of analyzing the comprehensive plan's land use policy direction on where the plan would support development besides just single-family and our single-family zones and seeing where we could expand duplexes within single-family zones.
It doesn't solve the need, but again, like Commissioner Hen said, you know, making it developer-friendly, but also fitting within the Iowa City model and community. I agree as far as, this is a big problem, which she did a great job on explaining. However, you know, it has so many facets. It's hard for, I'm kind of trying to stay in my lane with planning and zoning. But I do have a question, Tracy, for you, just to understand. So like on the rise development, so using that efficiency, let's say it was 750 bucks for efficiency. Is that, because it's in the Riverfront Crossing, that's a 10-year commitment or?
That one was a special development agreement, so that's imperp, ah, it's forever. It's perpetuity. Can't pronounce it, but yeah. It doesn't expire.
So then also those fee-in lieu of funds that were leveraged to buy duplexes or convert into duplexes, is that also in perpetuity? Or does that create kind of a cycle to where the first purchaser gets it at a good rate? And then when it comes back up for sale, then it might return to market rate? Or does it retain?
There's, yeah. So the assistance that we provide is 10 years. So they have to stay in the property 10 years before the full amount's forgiven. And at that point, they can sell whatever the market rate is. However, we put a, is it 21-year? A 21-year deed restriction that has to be owner-occupied. So they can sell it at whatever the market bears, but it has to go to another owner-occupied buyer. For the South District program, we have so many different programs with different rules. So, but that program, that's what the rules are.
Anything else, Chad? So is there support amongst the commission of asking staff to put together a request? Just asking the council to reform a committee just to examine this issue? Just for a refresh, it's been, you know, five and eight years respectively on those two different housing committees. And it seems like the right way to go on a multifaceted problem, to have people who can devote some time and attention to make some recommendations to this.
I, I don't know. I feel like the staff is doing stuff.
Oh, I think they are too. I'm just saying, like, there may be some other things that aren't being issued, or there may be some stuff that staff has wants to do, and this is a good way to bring them to council's attention. I, I don't want to over-complex this and make it more work for staff. I actually want it so that it provides an opportunity for people to come together to, if there's some tweaking that can be done, then let's make those recommendations. Because only staff, I mean, only council can amend these things and change these things.
But, but there is one, right? There is a committee, and Mark is part of that.
No, he, that, what he was, he was the president of Affordable Housing Coalition. It's a 501(c)(3).
No, no, a commission that the city council formed not long ago.
I think you're thinking of, he was the planning and zoning representative for the affordable, gosh, what's it called?
Affordable Housing Coalition.
Have we also called it the Steering Committee?
The Action Plan. The Affordable Housing Action Plan, but that was already adopted.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, then yes.
I still have a problem with this, coming out with the jargon of affordable housing. And all of us know that mostly the affordable housing isn't affordable for people that need it. So I'm all in favor of relooking at.
I completely agree. When you, we have the highest, I believe in the state of Iowa for highest housing and rent prices. It's a multifaceted problem. It's a complex problem that's going to take multifaceted, complex solutions. And it doesn't hurt on those things to every, periodically every five years, eight years, whatever, to take a fresh look at it and see what else we can do.
I also want to point that MIT has a livable wage calculator. And I looked it up the other day, and we are at 17, almost $18 an hour. But the minimum wage here, what is it? It's not even 10, right?
Well, state of Iowa is 725, but the Johnson County suggested minimum wage is like 10, I forget, 1060, 1080. But it has no, no legal impact anymore because the legislature took that away.
Okay, so our minimum wage is 725. And our livable wage, according to MIT, is almost $18 an hour, so.
And fast food places are paying 50 an hour.
Is there a current committee working on this?
I'd say right now, planning staff is working on amendments to the zoning code to address regulatory barriers. And then the, there's also the action recommendations in the Affordable Housing Action Plan.
When was that plan adopted and the committee that we were describing with?
2022. So basically, a group has formed, they made recommendations, they made the development regulations that they basically wanted staff to follow up on. Council approved that. So I think we'll have a, I think the city manager's direction was we, we provide this presentation. We have a joint meeting with you to discuss where we want to go. We'll provide a memo regarding, outlining about where we, based on the recommendations in the Affordable Housing Action Plan as we, as we focus on land use, what regulations we want to pursue, what, what we can do through a comprehensive plan amendment, what we can do until we have that comprehensive plan amendment, and then have council and P&amp;Z look at to see, provide input, say no, yay, yay, nay, whatever. And then we, we proceed. The comprehensive plan will be a large process, a time-consuming process. And that will have to go through a great deal of input from various stakeholders. So.
Yeah, I think it sounds like we're not quite in need of the committee right now, that this background work has been done, these goals have been set. There's no goal in there that I disagree with in any substantial way. And that the conversations that are coming up that Tracy just described feel like the natural course of events to me. And that, I'm not sure I see the need right now for a committee, but.
I'm, I'm fine with that, particularly if staff feels like they have what they need and they're working on it.
But something's being done, and it's going to continue to be done. I mean.
Because I'm, I never want to usurp staff because everybody just dumps things on them, and I don't want to be one of those people. But I also want to be cognizant of the fact that sometimes we have to refresh plans. You know, when you got a 2016 plan, a 2018 plan, they're starting to age a little bit. And so sometimes you just need to look at those. So the sense of the, of the commission is?
I think, let's let the process, I would suggest the process go forward, and we look at maybe after that's done? After the comprehensive plan is done?
Sounds like it's already in flight, so yeah.
Is there, is there a consensus at least that, that?
No.
Okay, looks like the majority is let's just let staff work on these issues and then report back at the appropriate time if we need to go to the next step.
And if we feel like things aren't moving rapidly enough for us or whatever, we should revisit.
All right.
I just, I just have a concern when I look at these millions of dollars that are being put into pots, and then we're not using them to buy more affordable housing that can be turned into units that can be bought as opposed to administrative costs, then I have a problem with that. So why are these funds not being used to purchase more housing that can be turned into affordable housing? Like that $217 million or?
We have 3.8 million in the Riverfront Crossing's Affordable Housing Fund now.
Where are they going to find?
But we just got, we've only had a million up until a few months ago. So we need to get to a point where we have enough money to actually do a project. And again, we've had 3.8 million, not for years. This is, we just got, we got 2.8 million last year, so.
Council was looking for us to do a large-scale affordable housing project. And they take time. You have to parcel land, you have to apply for all the different funding sources that go into it. And then you have to build it. So even if we started this year, you're probably not looking at a built project in the Riverfront Crossing high-rise for three years. So affordable housing takes time. It definitely takes time to do all the necessary measures that you have to do. So, and like I said, we just had the money, this amount of money in the last three years. And the Riverfront Crossing is just buying land? That might, that might take our 3.8 million.
And, and always keep in mind, 3.8 sounds like a lot of money, but for a large project, it's nothing.
But when I'm looking at the, at the reports that you've given me, $450,000 from the CDBG competitive housing programs, $700,000 for HEFJC. And it goes on and on with these funds that are there that are used for what? What is it going, I mean, we're, it's going out, but we're still not getting any more affordable housing.
Oh, we, we get more affordable housing every year. I mean, we provide.
What we call affordable housing.
Yeah, I think that's, that's also an issue. What we're calling affordable housing, you know, if, we're talking about a person making $15 an hour, right? That's 30,000.
Which is $2,000 a year.
Right.
And less than $1,000 a month with taxes. And 700 and some dollars for an efficiency is not affordable.
Exactly, yeah.
In anybody's, and plus then you have utilities and phones and transportation, so.
So when, when the city makes reports like this, and don't take this the wrong way, but when the city takes a report like this and they are saying, we're building affordable, all this money goes to affordable housing. But then what is it really that you're, what are the prices that you're counting as affordable, right? If you're counting a rent of $1,000 as affordable because it's lower than the market rate? Well, yeah, I understand that's lower than the market rate, but that's still not affordable for someone making $15 an hour. So I think. So I think that's the, the issue.
Yeah, I, I think Tracy explained there are many programs available to subsidize, the deep subsidies that you guys are talking about, the people that would qualify for those deep subsidies. They're not going to be able to afford, without that subsidy, the units that we're getting through the Riverfront Crossings program. But that's why there are all these other programs available for that, so.
But you have to know where those programs are, and what they are, and how to apply for them.
Right.
A lot of folks don't know what that process is.
But I think that's where, you know, you, you talk about hiring people. Do you put all the money into the subsidies, or do you put the money into helping people know where the subsidies are and how to do it? And there's a balance in there, and that's what the new staff that is working through Shelter House is there for. Exactly what you say is to say, I'm your ombudsman, you know, we're going to sit here and we're going to find you an affordable place to live. And, you know, they know it all, and they're going to walk them through that and, and make that happen. And so, but, you know, when you talk about those hundreds of thousands of dollars, it's not paying, it's not all-paying staff. It is subsidizing people right now that are out there in the hundreds of affordable housing units in this city. I mean, I, I understand the need, and I, you know, I'm, I sit up here with you and say, we need more affordable housing over and over and over again. But it, it's not like the money that we, the city has access to has been ill-spent on some giant bureaucracy. It just takes a bureaucracy to help people and to create the structure that makes it fair and equitable. I mean.
Which it's not right now.
Well, I guess, I think the part I don't like about the structure that came out tonight is that these landlords are deciding who gets to be in their units. But I'm just, guess I have a bad opinion of landlords, which probably isn't fair.
The other thing is, and I, I'm a, I was at the university for over thirty, almost 30 years. And unless you get all the information to the people that are going to be giving this information, whatever, it's either they get everything they need, or they get part of what they need, and they never have all the information they need to really serve the community. So is there a way that we know that these new people they're hiring are going to have all this information that they can give the clients coming in to let them be able to fill out all these various applications?
That's their job. I mean, I would, I trust that they, well, I trust that they will be well-trained and that they will have access to all that information. That's the point of having them.
But you and I both know that doesn't happen, right?
Sometimes it doesn't happen.
Okay.
But I think it happens more in Iowa City than some other places.
I don't think so.
Anyway. Robust discussion. Thank you very much, everybody.
I mean, Billy, I would invite you, if you have specific concerns about specific programs, I think anyone on the staff would be willing to talk to you about them.
That you have to go to so many different places to get the information you need.
I think, again.
And at what point do you become so frustrated that you don't do it? Or that you can't do it? Or if you have a language barrier that lets you get so frustrated that you can't let people know this is what you need?
Yeah, so I think if you have specific concerns that, you know, about specific programs, I think certainly Tracy or Erica are good resources. You can call me. I think instead of painting the broad strokes, it would be helpful to have specific information about specific programs or, you know, more specifics to try to address your concerns. And I think that would be probably more effectively done.
I can certainly do that.
Thank you for your passion. People need an advocate, so thank you. Next item on the agenda, item number five, bylaw amendment regarding public participation. Anne?
Thank you. Let's see if this is working again. I, I need to share my screen. We have a, sorry, we have a Zoom meeting going on. No one's on the Zoom except me, but it's just to record.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
Excellent job.
Okay, here we go. A bylaw amendment regarding public participation. This was another request from the commission that we, that the commission has an opportunity to look at the procedures that the city council adopted for public participation at council meetings. So in your agenda packet, there's a proposed amendment to your bylaws that incorporate public participation procedures which align with the city council procedures that were adopted. I talked with Sarah earlier today. This could be, even though it was proposed as an amendment to your bylaws, it could be something that the commission just adopt as a standalone procedure. Or you could go through the process of amending the bylaws, which requires an amendment, or sorry, a, a recommendation from the commission and approval by city council. So you have a couple options here. Again, the, the proposed amendments are in your packet. These, the, they cover rules such as kind of time limits on public comment, conduct of those providing testimony, consequences for failing to follow the rules. I did want to note a couple differences between what's proposed and kind of standard process that has happened at the commission over the years. So the council procedures limit testimony to three minutes. Typically at commission meetings, we've allowed five, so that's up, up to the commission to, to discuss. Also, the council procedures and the proposed amendment in your packet, each person is only allowed to address each agenda item once. And, and sometimes the commission does allow people to come back up for a second round if everyone else has had an opportunity to present to the commission. So that's a little bit different than how things typically have been going at commission meetings. One other thing, if the, if the commission does want to pursue a bylaw amendment as opposed to just adopting standalone procedures, I wanted to note that section six in the bylaws discuss an annual report that should be prepared annually, and it's something that we haven't, we haven't done for several years. So if the commission wants to do a bylaw amendment, you could also discuss if you want to keep that in or if you want to strike that as well. So I do have, I do have language here that just shows the proposed amendment if we need to go through that. But I'll turn it back over to the chair.
Thank you very much. I sort of instigated this. I just want to make sure people understand why. In the last year or two, public behavior at, um, public meetings has been a little bit out of control at times, and I've been at the receiving end of that. And I just want us to make sure we have the tools available if it becomes a problem here. I don't want to be able to not react. I want to be able to keep things under control at the time if it needs to be. We've been pretty lucky here. I think we've always erred on the side of letting people say what they have to say. No, not err. We've always allowed them, granted them because it is our meeting that they attend. But I just think we need to have the tools in place because public behavior has deteriorated through the years. And no sin, no, no belief I have would make us think we're immune from that. My only, probably, like, for the annual report, I don't think that's necessary because we, they get our, our minutes every meeting, so they know exactly what's going on. And they can cut, call a consult with us at any time, but that's just my opinion. And the three minutes, I think, is a little short. I'd like to, to stay with five minutes, but not have a second callback. Because doing this for eight years, somebody that's come back for the second time, they've never said anything new, ever, ever, not even once. It's just reiterating the same thing, so there's really no point. And I don't like the idea of where a group can aggregate their time because you'll just have people yielding to everybody, and it'd become completely unmanageable about what group are they in. And so I'd rather just say, everybody, one time, five minutes. That seems reasonable to me. But that's just my opinion, and I'll certainly let the commissioners here have their own opinions.
Except that aggregate was up to six minutes, as opposed to having 10 people with five minutes apiece.
Yeah, that's, that's the thing. I'm just fearful somebody, because people try to do that at times, like, why would I yield my time to this person? Well, it, then how do we judge if somebody's part of a group or not? And, and, you know, it's an impossible thing to know.
I saw it as an opportunity for the spokesperson, for instance, the Friends of Hickory Hill Park, that they, as a group, perhaps, maybe they have a PowerPoint, a brief PowerPoint or something. I, I see that as, I mean, I think it says organized group, that, that I am the representative of Hickory Hill, Friends of Hickory Hill, or of the Neighborhood Association, or whatever, and I am here to speak. It's, it's, we have, we have met, I mean, think about when they spoke at the, that hearing. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Friends of Hickory Hill Park. They have given me that opportunity. I think they should get more time.
But you think other members then would say, I won't say anything, I'll just let that speak for me? Or they'd say, I also want my five minutes?
Well, but that, whatever they do as an individual, they get to do as an individual. But I think if it is an organized group, that, that there are people who would not be speaking and saying, the Friends of Hickory Hill Park, or the Neighborhood Association, they speak for me, and so I am not speaking. I mean, I, I, I think it's the right thing to do.
Like he says, then you don't know how many people are in that group.
Yeah, but that's my point, is it'll just make it longer. I, I don't care, though. I'm perfectly fine with saying, you know, like you say, if we did five minutes, then you could have eight minutes if you're the representative of the group, speaking on behalf of the group.
Right.
You know, but somehow we need to say that.
Up front.
It's implied then that the other people aren't going to speak, that you're speaking for them somehow. Which, of course, is completely unenforceable.
Or you have them, or you could all have them all stand behind the person that's speaking, so you know who they are. All of you that they're speaking for, come up.
Well, but, come on, I just, I think when the person who was representing the Friends of Hickory Hill Park spoke, it, we, at least I, gave some credence to that person that it wasn't, you know, they were not speaking as a neighbor whose view shed was going to get ruined. They were speaking for all the Friends of Hickory Hill Park. And the, certainly all the Friends had not met and talked about this, but the, the council had, and I just, you know.
Do you have a proposal then?
Well, my first proposal, I really like what Anne said, I think it was Anne and not Sarah, that it shouldn't be in the bylaws. That what should be in the bylaws is maybe under powers and duties that we have the power to set rules related to public participation and, and that then we have the rules separate. This is a lot of stuff to add to.
The reason I'm in favor of, just as one person, of putting in the bylaws is rules prevent discrimination. It ensures everybody is treated exactly the same. And so it's not like we're having a big meeting where it's getting rowdy. Now, then we'll say, well, our rules are, rather if we just have them fixed in the bylaws, everybody's treated exactly the same all the time.
I mean, I don't feel that strong about that part of it, that, that's fine if, if, if people want it in the bylaws. But first off, can I just say, it's not really Article 9, it's Article 11. And I, if we're going to put it in the bylaws, I don't think it belongs as Article 11. I think it belongs after, um, powers and duties. Or conduct of commission business, sorry, because it relates to conduct of commission business. So it should be Article 9, and then all those other articles should just move down, in my opinion. See what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And the other question I have is, should the bylaws address electronic attendance? I can't, how do other?
It's a good question. I don't know. I haven't looked at it for that issue.
What does the city council do about that? And not, the whole, the electronic attendance of people to our meeting and the electronic attendance of members to our meeting, I feel like.
We don't really allow electronic attendance of members of the public.
Right, but I think it should say, we don't allow it.
That's, I think, by operation of state code.
Oh, okay.
Open meeting law.
Okay.
I'll, I'll just say, I was kind of the one who suggested putting it in the bylaws because I'm thinking that's just a way to, um, make sure that we know where this information is.
And that's fine with me too.
It's easier to change.
And, and if it's in the bylaws, that means city council has to have signed off on it. So then we've got, you know, they've approved it. This is, and, and what we're doing is consistent with what they're doing. I just think it adds some, uh, F to it.
It's fine.
But they, so, but the other aspect of it, the other side of the coin that people in my office pointed out was if, if you do want to, you know, eliminate the consolidation thing, it's easier to do if it's just a rule as opposed to a bylaw amendment. You know, the process for modifying would be easier if you just kept it as a rule. So those are the factors for you guys to weigh.
Okay.
Sorry, just one clarifying point. I have a typo, and I think, Billy, this gets to your point. I have it as Article 9, public participation, but it should be Article 11.
Okay, right, right.
So you're saying it should go after Article 8?
Right.
Conduct of commission business.
It should be Article 9, which is its number. I, I went back and forth about whether that's really what they meant to do, was make it Article.
I don't remember. I can't believe you caught that.
But, but I do agree with Commissioner Craig that we probably should mention something about electronic participation by commissioners.
By commissioners.
By commissioners, because I don't know what the law says. Like, say if we need a quorum of four, say we're doing a comprehensive plan amendment, and can one of the person be electronically attending, or they must be physically present? And that's probably a, a attorney-hecton question.
I think we've usually said quorum has to be present person.
But I think we should say that.
Right, that we should say that.
That'd be great.
And also, I have a question about section five. Is this attendance at council meetings?
Right, I said, do we do this?
Yeah.
I, I don't think that's necessarily, thank you very much, because it's on video. You know, we, we can watch on video, we read the minutes, so.
I do watch the videos, but.
You know, so I'm not sure that being present is going to add anything to anything. Frankly, I'd probably get more out of a meeting by watching it video, because then I can back it up and re-listen to something.
But it, I'm trying to find it now.
It's like, uh, section five in.
In eight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it says we're at the meetings. I mean, I think it says that.
Yeah, that's what it said in the old one, too.
Attendance at council meetings underline, I mean, it's the name of the section.
Well, can, in, in the housing commission, what we did the last year that I was there is like, we wanted to, to know what was happening in the council meetings. So what we did was like, we divided, so let's say, one commissioner was attending in January and February. The other one was attending in March and April. And then they would come to the commission meetings, and they would say, okay, from the whole meeting, this is the topic that they talked, that is concerning to us, or they said, like, no, there was nothing that we.
But I feel the staff keeps us up to date. I mean, they, you know, in staff reports, they always say they did this or they did that, or.
Then we could remove them.
I think section five can.
I agree.
I, I think between staff and you two, I keep pretty current.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sort of a geek when it comes to bylaws, and I, I tried not to overdo it, but.
But!
Article 5, meetings, section 3, it says, place of meetings, regular formal meetings shall be in a place accessible to persons with disabilities. Why can't it just say meetings? I mean, I, I was trying to think of a situation where you may choose to have a meeting in a place that wasn't accessible, and I can't think, I thought, maybe we would get on a bus and drive around town and look at affordable housing, but buses are accessible. I, I couldn't think of a place that.
Yeah, I don't think we.
I think that's fair.
Yeah, I agree.
It should just say meetings, so you would strike regular formal.
Yes. Good catch.
So I think probably tonight, a deferral would be a good idea, and then we can bring back these.
Yep.
As amended by what you guys recommended for vote next time.
Do you need a motion for that?
What's, what is, how is it stated on the agenda?
It doesn't, there's no action, there's no verb.
Oh, okay, all right.
So I don't think we need a motion, because there's no verb, there's no consider, there's no discuss, there's no, there's no action item there.
Put it back on the agenda.
All right, thank you.
So if you have any, anything else, I guess, email me and Anne.
Can we kind of come to an unofficial agreement on the five minutes, or is that?
On the time, oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, five minutes.
Five minutes, everybody?
And eight. And eight, at least eight, five and eight is.
But I'd want to make sure we have something like, as a person who's representing the group or something and is speaking in behalf of the group or something.
Right, an official representative, or, yeah, no, I totally agree with that.
All right, thank you very much.
Is the consensus also to strike the language about the annual report?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Oh, and then strike the second time around?
Gotcha, yeah.
And strike attendance at council meetings.
Yep, yep. Right.
All right, thank you very much. Next item, item number six, consideration of meeting minutes from January 18th, 2023. Anybody have any major additions or corrections? Seeing none, is there a motion for approval?
Move to approve.
Motion by Elliot, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Craig?
Patron.
Patron? Discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, motion.
I abstained, I was not there.
Oh, thank you very much. So it doesn't pass unanimously. It passes one, two, three, four, five to zero with one abstention. Townsend abstaining due to her absence at the meeting.
Oh, yeah, I love that.
Planning and zoning information, Ann?
I actually have several items. The Southwest District Plan was adopted. I think I mentioned that earlier in the presentation. The rezoning out by St. Andrews Church was also approved by city council. We had a final plat application that, there was no preliminary plat, but I just wanted to let you know, on Kimball Avenue, in between Kimball Road and I guess Gilbert Street, there was a final plat, just an infill plat that created three new single-family lots.
Where was that?
On Kimball Avenue.
I thought that was all built out, okay.
Yeah, there's some, the one, is it Kimball Avenue or Kimball Road?
Kimball Road, Kimball up the hill.
Kimball Road is up the hill.
Yes, up the hill. Okay, Kimball Road.
But I'm trying to think where it intersects Gilbert, but right there at the beginning.
At the base, right just east of Dubuque Street.
They tore down that little cottage that was.
Yes, right there, yeah, so.
They're going to do what there?
Not, it's not there, though.
Yeah, I know, it's gone.
The subdivision was further north. There was, it was a very large, single-family lot that they were able to subdivide into three lots. So might see a couple infill homes.
All right.
Weird.
The solar amendment for the parking reductions, that passed. And then the Orchard and Metten rezoning failed. The vote was four, three, but they needed a supermajority because of a protest petition. And so that failed, and that's all I have.
With the protest petition, so it required the supermajority, but then now it's dead. They would have to submit a altered proposal? It can't be the same proposal or similar? What's the rules on that?
We don't actually have any rules. They would need a new application.
New application.
Just new application, okay.
So they're going to be building on Kimball Road?
Potentially, yeah.
Wow.
Okay, any other planning and zoning information from commissioners?
I have something that I wanted to share. I was not at the council meeting because I feel I have a conflict with this Orchard development that I did not know about when we first discussed it. And that is that my son, I had a conversation after our meeting with someone who I realized is owner of the property, part owner. I don't know if he's full owner or part owner. I had been introduced to him before by, and I can only remember his first name, but he is in a business relationship with my son, which I had no idea he had anything to do with that development. And I would, as long as they're in that business relationship, which is probably not ongoing for very long, I would not, I would recuse myself if that development comes back to us and he is still the property owner. And I told Ann and Sarah that I had that conversation.
Thank you. Is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Motion by Townsend, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Elliot. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.